Okay, I have six thirty. It is today is Tuesday, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. This is a regular meeting of the Cherry Hills Village City Council and roll call members, please.
Counselor Sepavio's absent. Counselor Wheel?
Happy to be here.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Gallois?
Here.
Counselor Shadine?
Also happy to be here.
Counselor Blum?
Did I?
Oh, Sam, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all
I'm going to, I think, I know the next step has police department presentation. I'm going to take, see if there's, take the sign up, maybe if there's no objection, to take the audience participation first. Nobody? Okay. Then we'll move on to item four, police department presentations. Chief Lyons. Oh, okay.
Did you want to say?
I didn't have.
Fred, you're signed up. You're, you're up.
Good evening. You've heard me a number of times speak on this tree issue. And I know you're very reluctant to make any language amendments to our tree preservation ordinance. And I get the private property issue. I have no, no problem with that. The issue is timing. And if, if you're happy driving by Quincy and Franklin right now and looking at that and thinking, huh, so what, then whatever I have to say isn't going to make any impression on you. But what I do have to say is, we have to start with how that property looks right now. With thirty-six trees being removed, some thirty inches in diameter. Now, do we want that to ever happen again? I hope the answer is no. We have to do something to prevent a private party from coming in and basically raping a property of everything. And that same party today could decide, you know, I'm not so much in love with that property. I think I'm going to put it back on the market. And then we're all going to look at each other and think, oh, my God, how did that happen? How did we let that happen? So as I've said in the past, can't we alter the language a little bit so that a person buys the property, he, he hires an architect, he hires all the consultants he wants, he does his plans, he brings them to the city for approval, he gets a building permit, all that's above board. But he only can take down trees on the site within thirty days of breaking ground. Now, maybe you say forty-five. I'm just saying thirty days of breaking ground, then he can, he can go to town and do whatever he wants. And at least there's a commitment there on the part of the private party that he's going to follow through and build the house. Folks, we've lived with this for two years. Now, I, I don't know if that's it exactly, but I've said to, to Paul in the past, I've said to, to other people, when did they close on that property? And the answer I get is, I don't know. When did they get a building permit on their property? I don't know. Do we track anything to make sure that we're holding people's feet to the fire? And if they do not break ground within thirty days, then what's the penalty? There has to be a penalty here. That's all I, I'm saying. I, I don't have any specific language, but gosh, I hope we can do something to, to prevent that from happening again. I realize that particular property is the poster boy of this situation. That is the extreme situation, but it, that, that could happen again. There are a lot of homes right now, particularly in Old Cherry Hills where I live, that are, are being scraped and big homes being put up. But not, not to this situation. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your thoughts. Any other, before I close out the audience participation, hearing none, we'll turn to consent, or agenda item number four, which is police department presentation. Chief Lyons, you have the floor.
All right. First, good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. Thank you for the opportunity to provide what I hope is a quick update on the ongoings around the police department. I've had a few opportunities to tease some improvements and some modifications to the organization and previous council meetings. So this is really just sort of summary of what we've been working on for the last six months since I've been in the position that I'm in now, and some things that we intend to do as we move into the next year. Let me first start by just reiterating how honored I am to be your, your police chief. It's such a privilege to lead such well-intentioned and, and hardworking men and women. It's, I'm constantly surprised at, at the quality of work that they do and, and the level of service they provide this community. So having that lens in mind as we kind of progress, excuse me, as you know, the first few weeks that I was here, I sat down with every officer, every, in fact, every employee in the police department. It took me three weeks to get through it, but gave them all an opportunity to share their perspective on the organization, what we were doing right, where there were areas of improvement. And from those conversation, there were conversations, there were some pretty clear themes that developed. And those were recruitment and retention, department branding, operational efficiencies, and evaluation of how we do business, the processes and systems that we currently have in place. The first one that came up, the recruitment and retention, we looked at a couple solutions. One was to create some aggressive hiring campaigns. We have done that. I am happy to report that as of one o'clock this afternoon, I extended two conditional offers of employment to two police officer applicants. And as of January third, we will be staffed to one hundred percent of our authorized strength. And at last check, we're the only organization in the front range that can say that. So I'm really pleased with the fact that we will be fully staffed come January third. You will, the sitting council come January will likely hear a presentation on feasibility with regards to migrating to a defined benefit pension for our police officers. We conducted a promotional process for the rank of sergeant. A result of that was promoting two internal candidates to the rank of sergeant and hiring an external candidate at the rank of sergeant, Sergeant Lennon Drew, who happens to be here. We hired him from Anaheim, California. So a change in supervisory staff. And now that we will be migrating to a new staffing model, we'll have twenty-four hour a day supervision in the field, as we should. And then pushing out our wellness initiative for two thousand twenty-three. It's a pretty robust, organized, formal initiative. You'll see that in, in the budget presentation tonight. I had the opportunity to move some existing money from one line, one item to another around wellness. And we are partnering with the Cherry Hills Village Police Foundation to supplant some incentives around wellness moving forward. So really excited about what that looks like. And that was, that was a huge need and an ask from our staff. Department branding, these are some, some low-hanging fruits, but I'll just touch on them anyway. Of note, where is the image that you see on your screen? That is our patch, our new employee-designed patch that will be adorning our uniforms come January. So it's a little bit more intimate with the city and, and both in color scheme and by design. And again, this is a grassroots effort from, from our staff. So pretty excited about that. Increase in promotional items. And then really to tell the increase in community programs. I think engagement is so critical in, in any community, but particularly our community here in Cherry Hills. I think there's a, a wanton desire on behalf of our residents to, to connect with our, our, our staff, our, particularly our police officers. So there'll be an increase in community programs. I think many of you attended National Night Out. The Citizens Police Academy kicks off this spring. Every other month, we're doing a Coffee with a Cop. We're creating some, some community programs around engaging the youth. So there's a lot, lot to come, and I look forward to seeing you at those programs. Operational efficiency. I know we've had some conversation around our staffing model. Come January eighth, the officers will be moving to a twelve-hour shift model. This allows a, the, the staffing to double in size for each patrol shift. So currently, on most patrol shifts, we're running two officers. Under this model, that will move to four. And we'll have twenty-four hour a day supervision, which is something we haven't had for over a decade. We are implementing some crime analysis software to better track real-time activity within the city, both criminal activity and traffic crashes, which we continue to, to keep an eye on. Looking at the feasibility of some specialized assignments. Of note is the increase in our school resource officer program, which you all are aware of, as well as the creation of a community partnership unit. We'll have two officers that will be assigned to dealing with quality of life and community concern issues, these long-term, problem-solving kinds of issues that can often find themselves falling through the cracks. There will be officers that will represent our police department in engaging the community on these problem-solving issues, be liaisons with the HOA, focus on crime prevention, those kinds of initiatives. Leveraging technology, an effort to work smarter rather than harder. Of note, the FLOCK Automated License Plate Reader System, which is in, currently in six of our communities here in the city. And now we are connected to those systems, and that is paying dividends as you, as you might think it would, as well as a policy management software program to better outline, modify, and publish department policies that are modeled around best practice. You'll see in a, in a future report, some information around our, our department training. Historically, we've met the state minimum mandatory requirement of twenty-four hours of training per officer per year. In two thousand twenty-three, we'll be nearly one hundred hours per officer, moving from the minimum mandatory of twenty-four. We've partnered with some local jurisdictions to, to participate in their in-service program. We're bringing training to our department from outside resources at no cost, and then sending officers to operationally necessary training in an effort to become trained, to what we call Train the Trainer, where they can then teach that information back to our officers. Improving our uniform and equipment issuance, some of those you've heard of. And of recent, there was a, a grant, a donation that was utilized to purchase a uniform weapon system for all of our officers, both handguns and rifles, as well as protective gear in the way of active shooter kits. That includes a rifle-rated vest and, and helmet, ballistic helmet. God forbid we ever need that equipment. It's sure nice to have it. We've issued Narcan to all of our officers to, to sort of fight in the opioid crisis, although we don't see that so much in the city. Certainly, we're encountering that on the streets and on the roadways with some frequency. And so now our officers are both trained and equipped with Narcan. And that was at no cost. That was provided by the state of Colorado. Redefining traffic enforcement priorities. I think this is important because you see in our monthly reports, our statistics, and perhaps you've noticed a reduction in the number of citations issued by our officer. Like, I promise you, that is strategic. One of the things that, that we identified is what you hope to accomplish by traffic enforcement. It's really designed to decrease traffic crashes. So instead of writing tickets for the sake of simply writing tickets with no measurable impact, I provide a direction for officers to increase their traffic enforcement in the areas where we're having traffic crashes. A comparison of the last ninety days to the same ninety, ninety-day period last year, we've realized a twenty-three percent reduction in, in crashes in our city. So the, the strategy is working. We're going to continue to expand that. Taking a data-driven approach to traffic safety is important, and it's the best way to utilize the resources that we have. And then lastly, clearly defining roles and responsibilities of our staff. As you know, the Cherry Hills, the, the staff of Cherry Hills wear a lot of hats. Sometimes those hats can be to an extreme. So what we're hoping to do is, is streamline the hats that are worn, again, in an effort to identify what's important. Our strategic priorities are making sure those are accomplished in a successful way. And then lastly, evaluation of processes and systems. Talked about the policy software, the hiring and promotional processes, which have been quite successful, and preparing for future national accreditation. This last slide is really just a summary of many of the things I touched on, but are really just illustrative in nature. But the, the staffing model is a, is a big deal. Without increasing a single FTE in our police department, we're doubling the amount of officers we have on the street on any given shift. We're adding, we added one FTE as a result of the contract with St. Mary's. We purchased our new handguns, again, paid for, totally by donation. The active shooter kits paid for totally by donation from the, the foundation. Trying to leverage technology, successful hiring processes and promotional processes. Our body-wound camera initiative, which you are familiar with and approved, went live November first. And so that's fully operational, ahead of the legislative deadline. Belished community programs, and then that wellness initiative that I touched on, and how important that is to make sure that our officers and our staff have the resources necessary, should they need it, to find themselves either in crisis, it's physical wellness, it's emotional wellness, it's mental health wellness, it's spiritual wellness, it's all of those things. And that is going to be a collaborative effort in two thousand twenty-three, something we're really proud of. So as always, happy to answer any questions you have. I know that was very quick, which is unlike me, but I am respectful of your time. Happy to answer any questions you might have around these updates.
Can you hear me now? Question I've got, because Commander retired, are we looking at replacing that position, or is this something you're going to promote from within, from one of the sergeants?
That's a great question. Let me first say, you cannot replace a commander, Pat Weathers. But having said that, his position will be filled after the first of the year. There's, all of these things that we've kind of talked about are, are happening now, and we have December thirty-first deadline on, on many of these. So right after the first of the year, when the dust has a chance to settle, I'll move into that promotional process. That will be available to both internal and external candidates. Thank you.
Chief, great work here during your first six months, accomplishing a lot. And I know that I appreciate it, and I think the citizens of the community do as well. I'd also like to thank Mark Griffin, Griffin and the, the rest of the police foundation for the work you guys are doing and making the donations and the things available to our PD that you have been doing. So thank you.
Yeah, just a general comment. Thank you very much for your good work.
I would echo all of that. And I would also just like to add that before even you've, I know you're planning on making changes with scheduling, et cetera, but I wanted to let you know that I have noticed an increase in patrol. I, I see police cars driving by, and I don't think it's my kids this time. Not yet. They're too young. But I, I really, I've noticed it. And I wanted to make sure that you and everyone in your department knows that, that work is not in vain and it's making an impact.
Thanks. I'd certainly want to echo the comments of the rest of the council. Good stuff and, and a lot of activity going forward that has occurred that'll benefit us in the future. The thing that I'd like to ask for next, next time we do an update is, it would help me to have some context. I know you covered a lot of ground very fast, and I, I appreciate that, so there wasn't time. But, but, oh, you know, pick one, like, say, branding. What's our objective? How are we going to know when we achieve it? You know, we, we, we talked about citations and safety, and I think it's great to trade off citations for, for accident reduction. On the other hand, what is our, what's our target? What's our objective? How are we going to know we're succeeding? You know, that, that sort of stuff, to sort of surround some of these activities and put them in a little better context. That'd help me, anyway.
Thank you. You will see in the next few months, a five-year strategic plan that includes performance measurements and objectives, particularly around benchmarks for communities our size. And they, they evaluate crime and traffic statistics in a variety of different ways, but many, many are around incidents per one thousand residents as a way to, to measure those, those outputs and objectives. You will see a more academic plan, a strategic plan, that outlines not only our core strategies, but how we measure success. It's one thing to say, hey, we're really good at something, but it's, it's another thing to see it measured against like organizations. And so you will see that soon. The, the manager and I have been talking around what that's going to look like, sort of a supplement to the master plan, but specific to our, our police department.
Terrific. Looking forward to it. Thanks.
I'd say a couple of questions. You said by January, you'll be a hundred percent staffed. How, how do you see that? Is that enough? I mean, in the future? How do you, obviously, you always like more, I suppose, but how do you see, now that you've been here a while, how do you see our staff?
Thank you. Well, let me, let me qualify the, the statement. We will be a hundred percent staffed, with the exception of the commander's position. That will take some time to, to fill, only because of the scope of that process. On my very first day here, I attended an HOA meeting, and I was asked by, by residents in that meeting, do you need more officers? And of course, every police chief in the country is going to say, yeah, I, I could definitely use more, more resources. I would say to you that with this staffing model, we will be adequately staffed to the point where all of our necessary objectives, our core strategies, and our core mission will be accomplished with a high level of service. I feel as though given, and there's a lot of pieces to that algorithm, calls for service, response times, community engagement, time away from, from the work, having a relief factor, all of these things that go into identifying your staffing needs, that analysis. We are in very good shape. Not to say that there may not come a day where a, a, a need for an increase in FTE comes, but I would suggest that the modifications that have been made to the organization put us in a much better place to meet the level of service expectations that this community has than we had previously.
That's very helpful. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Chief. That was a great presentation. And thank you for all you've done in the short time you've already been here. Next, reports from city boards, commissions. Don't see anyone raising their hand. Consent agenda. I need to withdraw item seven A from the consent agenda.
Okay.
And I'd like to remove seven B as well. And seven B as well. Can I have a motion for seven C?
I move to approve item seven C.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Let's take up item seven A, because Counselor Blum was not here.
I was not here, so I would not be able to vote on that. Yes.
I move to approve the minutes from November first, two thousand twenty-two.
All in favor?
Second?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next. Randy seconded. And all in favor, it's unanimous, except for Counselor Blum. Next, seven B.
Yeah, I'd like to just
Yeah, I'd like to just take a moment to recognize that we are making a shift again in the city with our engineer, our outsourced city engineer. We are moving away from, we took that out to bid and moving away from our, the last five years engineer that we've had, and we are going back to Icon Engineering, which we had prior to the prior, our engineer that's finishing up their term now. I would like to just take a moment maybe and introduce Troy. And Troy, I don't know if you want to come say a word to counsel about your upcoming assignment here, your contract with the city.
Troy Carmen, Icon Engineering. And yes, this is great to be back and very glad to be able to bring our professional services to the pieces of infrastructure and otherwise boring problems that come across the engineering desk, but very happy to work with the staff again and solve these problems in a productive and hopefully very efficient manner. So nothing further for an engineer to say, but thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
That's all. Go ahead, Katie.
Then I move to approve the professional services agreement with Icon Engineering to provide civil engineering services.
Check it.
Have a motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up is new business, 10A, this is a public hearing on the 2023 proposed budget. In the presentation, this would be Director Farman. You're up.
Whoa, there's a lot of Icons on the desktop. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Mayor and City Council received the 2023 proposed budget back on September 20th, and we also had a study session on October 3rd. Tonight, there will be a public hearing for the 23 proposed budget. There are also two other items for consideration this evening that are related to next year's budget, and two of them are first readings on Council Bill 14 and Council Bill 15. Those will be adopting a budget and levying proper taxes for 2023, and then Council Bill 15 authorizes appropriations for fiscal year 2023. That's not working. Let's back out of it. I haven't changed them. Getting our technical expert here in just a second. There we go. I will go through the proposed budget in a little bit higher level this evening since council has received a lot of this information in detail, but I want to do, I do want to hit the highlights. So the city's general fund is the largest city fund, and it receives almost two-thirds of the city revenues, and it accounts for almost 60% of its expenditures, most of which are operational costs such as public safety and public works. For 2023, the proposed budget includes a balance in the general fund revenues and expenditures of 8.46 million. This is a 10 and a half percent budget increase, or approximately $807,000, with over half of that increase transferred to the capital fund. So when you take the capital fund transfer out, it's a 5% increase from 2022's budget. The 2023 general fund ending fund balance is expected to be unchanged from year-end And since October 3rd, there are a few proposed changes to this budget I want to highlight for the City Council. We do have the medical premiums finalized now. They were originally forecasted rise by 8%. We were hoping to be on the conservative side of that, and we do know that the final rate increase will be a blended plan increase of 2.81%. So that is very good news on the health plan side. Staff recommends maintaining the proposed budget, however, since there are currently a few staff vacancies, and we do have open enrollment coming up soon, so employees not currently enrolling and receiving health benefits, they may have the opportunity to add the city health coverage. So we would be comfortable maintaining the health budget for those type of contingencies. There are also two recommended repurposing of funds, which will have no effect on appropriations, and one is to utilize $10,000 of the proposed building permit portal system budget, and that's to replace the city's antiquated phone system. That still leaves that building permit system with ample budget, once we've better defined the scope of that project. We also would like to repurpose $35,000 in the capital fund, and that would go toward variable message boards to be used for construction projects, special events, or trail work, rather than the original request, which was to purchase a hydrojetter. In the Parks and Recreation Fund, there is an additional request for $105,000, and that is to procure sculptures at John Meade Park. This art piece has now, or piece says, has now been identified by the Arts Committee, and that will total $120,000. The additional request is funded by accrued donations and also future planned donations with no effect on fund balance, and the art will not be procured until fundraising has met this budget goal. Next week, or next month, the council will be able to review the art proposal on December 14th, and that will be before the budget second reading. The general fund's major revenue source, of course, is property taxes. The general fund receives $2.8 million, or about one-third of its total revenues. Citywide property taxes are 5.7 million, or 48% of total revenues. These revenues are shared between the general fund and the Parks and Recreation Fund. The city's mill levy is proposed to remain constant from 2022, and that is 14.722 mills. The city's assessed values are estimated to be 1% lower next year. That is based on the county's initial projection, and we are still waiting for the final assessed values from the county, and that will be later this month or early in December. Final certification is required by December 15th. Other major general fund revenues include motor vehicle use taxes and sales taxes, each of which represent 14% of the general fund receipts. The city is assuming a stable local and national economy next year. This means that staff is forecasting roughly the same economic activity as in 2022. We do want to reference the unofficial sales tax ballot. Those results are still not yet official, and we would recommend discussing those results once they become official with City Council, probably at the retreat in early 2023, so we can talk about the long-term effect of possible additional revenues, and also in context with the capital fund, because a lot of those revenues do fund the capital purchases for the city. So we thought that would be a better discussion to have with that type of context with the council at the retreat. On October 3rd, the council did have a couple of questions. One question was about the 2023 building permit revenue forecast. We did perform some further revenue, went back a few more years, and talked to the community development manager, Paul Workman, and we are comfortable with that forecast. We believe that the building activity next year will be similar to this year's building activity, and I think we've already met or exceeded those building permit fees by now. As previously conveyed, the council staff is comfortable with most of the revenue estimates because of the economy is improved post-pandemic, and so we were able to be a little more realistic, yet still conservative with the revenue forecast for next year. So that is why the revenue has increased in 2023. The general fund expenditures are comprised of these major functions, which include public safety and public works totaling 57% of total fund expenditures. Now I want to shift to the rest of the general fund expenditures. City personnel, of course, are valuable assets to the city, and due to the labor market or the situation over the last couple of years, recruiting and retaining employees has been very challenging, and the city's overall compensation package needs to remain competitive, or we will fall behind in the market. We did a survey of other municipalities for comparative purposes, and that showed a 4.5% average mid-year salary increase this year, along with planned projected increases of 5% to 6% next year. The city has also realized a higher turnover rate this year, and we can tell that there has been a lot more competition in the private sector as well as public sector. So keeping this in mind, next year's proposed budget does include a 4% cost of living adjustment for all city employees and up to 2% merit increase for eligible employees. The overall broad highlights of the general fund expenditures include cost increases to city property liability, workers' compensation, and the health benefit insurances. We are also trying to manage the highest inflation rate in 40 years, and that's affected many of the operational costs. City Council has reviewed these expenditure highlights or proposed budget changes from 2022 to 2023, and you reviewed these on October 3rd. Many of the planned technology improvements will enhance the city's customer service to our residents and other stakeholders. For public safety and public works, there were no additional changes from October 3rd. In the capital fund, there was that one recommended change for the variable message boards. Public Works has several planned capital programs for '23, the normal improvements in major maintenance of streets, and that includes chip sealing and painting, traffic calming and concrete replacement. The chip seal program is at a normal baseline amount of $380,000 next year. There are also several equipment items to be purchased in 2023 for $82,500, and they have shared functions with street and parks. There's also planned bridge maintenance for the city's four bridges. There's a total of $725,000 budgeted for Parks and Recreation capital expenditures in the 2023 proposed budget. Additionally, there is $500,000 budgeted for the High Line Canal stormwater infrastructure costs as the city proceeds through that project design and hopefully into the preconstruction phase of that project next year. In addition, the city is proposing an electric vehicle charging station to be installed at City Hall. There is an additional awning for City Hall to provide outdoor shade in the summer, and City Council member Wheel had an additional request of $95,000, a net $95,000 cost, to remove a traffic island at Bellevue and Cherry Hills Farm Drive, and that would be 50% reimbursed from a homeowners association. So the total planned capital expenditures are $1.8 million in 2023, and the ending fund balance is projected at 8.49 million in the capital fund. Moving to another city major fund is the Parks and Recreation Fund. There are eight full-time employees and five seasonal employees paid from the Parks and Recreation Fund. This fund also pays an allocation for other city position based on their parks-related functions. Budget highlights include redesigning the trail map, along with the public art project, and the projected ending fund balance for this fund next year is 1.6 million. Other fund highlights include the Conservation Trust Fund and the Arapahoe County Open Space Those are legally restricted to fund acquisition of parks, as well as improvements to existing parks and trail networks. Councilmember Sheldon had asked about reserve requirements in these two funds, because we do have some reserves, and there are no reserve restrictions from the county nor from the state. They do have specific restrictions, obviously, on the allowable expenditures, but not on the reserves. So we do have to send annual reports to the county and to the state. The other budgeted funds are the Catherine Anderson Land Donation Fund, and they plan to use $20,000 for the Quincy Farm general maintenance and $49,550 for Cherry Hills Land Preserve annual plan projects, and that includes signage and construction documents for repurposing the Big Barn. The city's Water and Sewer Fund accounts for revenue expenditures related to the consolidation of water and sewer utilities within the city's responsibility. There are sewer line repairs and associated engineering costs next year, and a Martin Lane project planned for 2023. Last but not least is the American Rescue Plan Act affectionately called the ARPA Fund Grant, and the city did receive its second installment from grant funds of $835,000 earlier this year, and these are, of course, restricted for uses outlined by the U.S. Treasury. And in 2023, the city will move to outline a plan for budgeting these funds and hopefully obligating them in 2024 because they need to be spent by 2026. That concludes my presentation. Again, the City Council is considering two ordinances related to 2023 budget and mill levy, and the second reading of these ordinances are scheduled for December 14th. What questions do you have regarding the 2023 budget?
Council questions, Counsel Blum?
I have no questions, but I do want to thank you for all your work you did on this. I stepped in, worked with Jessica for the prior three years, and if you just step into a project like this, I think you've done a very good job, and we appreciate the work on that. Other than that, I have no questions.
Thank you, Doug. Couple of questions. One of the first things you talked about was a reallocation of 10,000 out of our software, proposed software program for permitting and putting that towards a new hydrojetter?
That would be for the replacement of our telephone system.
Sorry, phones, the phones in City Hall in this building.
Yeah, we've had the systems going down regularly, and it's difficult to find even support or maintenance for the system because it is so antiquated now.
Okay, so I guess my question is only, we just, did we have that fat of a budget for the, for the software that we can just rob $10,000 out of it to put into a phone system?
Good question. If you don't mind, I'll field that one. No, we were actually able to work with a provider by signing a contract with them to do some work this year with this year's budget between the previous discussions we've had on this. We also received a little bit of savings for being able to do that, and so that additional $10,000 is still going towards it. It's just out of this year's budget and based on some work that we're having them do in preparation this year.
Great. Okay, that's great. A couple more. On our capital fund, you had $100,000 for bridge maintenance, of which $75,000 was going to be paid from the Parks and Rec Fund, correct?
That's correct.
How does that allocation happen? That seems like a 75% allocation coming from parks. I'm just curious, that's an allocation I don't know that I've seen before.
Are they bridges in the parks?
What's that?
Are they the bridges over the canal and those bridges?
Why 75, not 100, then, I guess? I...
I think it's related to pedestrian bridges, but why don't I let Emily Black answer that one?
Yeah, my understanding, since Jay isn't here, is that it's related to specifically the pedestrian crossings on those bridges, so a portion of that is... the pedestrian crossings on those bridges. So a portion of that is coming from the Parks Fund because it is connecting as a trail essentially in those locations.
Okay.
Then to Dan's point, why isn't it 100% and not just, if it's all trail bridges?
I, no, it's, so it is the, I know, it's hard to see. They are our bridges for roads, but a lot of the work being done is to make those bridges compliant for the pedestrian side, but there is some work done to the bridge itself.
I see, okay.
And that's fine. I'm not questioning necessarily the percentages. I just want to make sure it's been thought through that it's just a new, a new percentage that I don't think I've seen, a 75 towards Parks and 25 going back to the public works. You, you answered my question about, my questions about September, about the reserve funds. But I do have a follow-up on that. It was the, can you bring that slide up with the two reserve funds?
Sure.
And whether, the restrictions on them? So you're saying that end of 2023, we'll have a $486,000 balance in the Conservation Trust Fund and a $1,000,001 in the Arapaho County Open Space Fund?
That's correct.
Of which both of those numbers are unrestricted funds because they're the reserves?
As of right now, yes.
No, you're not, you're not, those are, those are all restricted.
They're legally restricted for those purposes that I mentioned.
Okay, that's what I wanted, I thought I heard you say that the reserves are unrestricted.
Unobligated. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
So these are all earmarked restricted funds specifically to the uses called out in those particular funds?
But there's no minimum required amount. So it's unrestricted.
Understood. From an, from an amount perspective. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Yeah, good clarification.
Doug, thank you for your good work. Just one clarification. Why is it that the Water and Sewer Fund is budgeted? I mean, it's losing money as it, as it sits here.
I know that's on Jay's radar. That's kind of the public works director's purview, but I think we need to do more long-range planning with that. But I, I don't know the history of that fund, but I know there's been, you know, obviously a lot of maintenance issues there. But we'll have to do some more long-range planning with that to see, because that money is drawing up, that's for sure.
Yes, but, but obviously there's the opportunity, and it's certainly not a guarantee at this point, but there'd been some work done by Jay. At a time before, we had done a lot of this reconstruction work to bring those sewer lines up to a certain standard in hopes that it meets the minimum requirements by another sewer district or provider, so that they might be able to theoretically take that process over for us, since us being in the business of providing sewer to just a handful of folks is not the most efficient way to do it. So I, if I understand it right, and I reserve the right to say that this is not the most recent information, because Jay's not here, but if I understand it right, that actually is projected to still continue to draw down. So it will look even more narrow next year. But there is an end goal in mind.
Now that I remember, I think Jay did plan on a utility rate review. So that...
This has been, it's been, it was funded out of a special assessment for these users. So it doesn't come from our general revenues. This is a special user fee that funded this.
But nonetheless, loses money every single, every single year.
Oh, sure, it's been used.
And I, and I get that. It's part of our master plan. Let's be out of the sewer business. And, you know, and so let's, okay.
Let's do that.
Yeah, I think the issue is trying to compel the other utility districts to, to take over those.
Exactly, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm just going to start by apologizing that I was not able to attend the study session meeting that had been rescheduled a couple of times. So I apologize if you guys discussed some of these items already. But the, I guess the first observation I have is that I am surprised that we didn't buy new phone system when we moved into this building. How frugal of us to eke every last ounce out of that thing.
I was not here then, but I just can say generally, we're nothing if not frugal. So I, I think that's pretty consistent with the overall approach for...
So that was our old phone system, and we just are reusing it?
Does the joint public safety building have new phones? Newer? Does your building have newer phones? Different than what's here?
Actually, I can't speak to what we have here. I've not had the privilege of speaking on any of the City Hall phones, but our phones seem to be adequate.
So, so this is not doing anything with South Metro over there?
Correct.
It's just this building?
Just this building. Okay. We, we, our phones have gone down over the last four months. I'm, this is a guess, but I want to say five times, six times over the last four months. It's, it's becoming chronically...
Disruptive.
Yeah.
A couple of questions about the capital fund. Can you bring that slide back up, please? The next, you can go back to the next one.
Parks and Rec?
Yeah, just this one in general. So the first question I have, I know, was that the, the island, is that the amount that we originally talked about and discussed and approved way back when? Or is that a new amount? That's the same amount? Okay.
No, I, I believe that, that amount has changed from the amount discussed last year. I believe there was a match that council discussed that I, and I'm looking at Randy, I think it was 40,000. Is that correct?
Well, okay.
Talk to me about the island, Randy.
Okay, the, yep. This situation has been dynamic over time. It started out with a $50,000 estimate that was back of the envelope, which turned into 100, which turned into 190. And that was after we got rid of the archaeological excavation work and all the rest of it that had been required by CDOT. The, I guess, let me make sure I understand the question. That, those were bids, and that's the lowest bid that we got. The HOA is, what do I want to say, squirming and thinking, you know, the city ought to pay for all of this and, and all the rest of it. And, and yet I don't think that's appropriate either. I think the majority of the benefit will go to the residents, but they are residents and taxpayers, the Cherry Hills Farm folks. And it, it is public streets. So that's, that's how we got to the 190 through the bid process, and then the split is 95-95.
But I think last year...
Was it lower?
I believe it was, I thought it was 40,000 last year. That's literally off the top of my head, and, and don't trust that. I don't know if we can access that information easily, Doug.
We can probably find that if...
Yeah, I just...
The other, the other, the reason it might have been 40 is that at one time, we were working with, and it could have been 45 because it was like 90,000 or so. That was the next set, the next round of costs that were divided in half. The split hasn't changed, but the total has continued to grow. And that's how we got to where we are. Same project, and we've tried to skinny that down as much as possible, get rid of all the frivolities.
And the only reason I bring it up is because that number did seem higher to me than what we had originally discussed. And I'm not necessarily saying anything other than the fact that we should pause for a moment and, and make sure that we've all discussed and actually affirmatively said, yes, we think that's a good use of $95,000. And I, I don't know if you had that discussion in October or not. So that's why I brought that up. The second question that I had, and sorry, Randy, it feels like I'm picking on you, but it's not, it's not personal. The, the electronic vehicle charging station, I am all for us becoming more environmentally friendly and conscious. You know, I drive an electric car. I know several people here do. I'm just wondering if putting the charging station in first isn't a little bit cart before the horse because the city doesn't currently have any electronic vehicles. And I know through the master planning process, there were some comments that putting in charging stations in City Hall is not what the community, the community doesn't see this as being a central charging place for, you know, people who don't live in Cherry Hills Village. And so in the absence of the city owning electronic vehicles, electric vehicles at this point, I, I feel like maybe the capital funds should be used to actually procure the vehicles. It's a little bit chicken and egg. You kind of have to have both at the same time. I believe that there was some conversation of grant money, matching funds, grant money. Is that, okay. I just wanted to bring that point up. The other question I had was, you mentioned at the bottom that we have a projected ending fund balance. You also have in your unaudited financial statement for this month that we are projecting to have a surplus of $1.7 million this year?
That's correct, and that, that's factored into this.
And that's included. Okay, that was the question. It's included in the 8.4. It also says in these documents that excess revenues are transferred to the capital fund per council policy. And I guess I was just a little surprised. I, I didn't know that we, that that was our policy, actually. We've done that all the time?
Practice, I think, more, maybe practice might be the better phrase, but yes, it's been the practice since, I think, you went back and looked at least since 2014, I think? Is that correct?
I think the capital fund has been in existence since 2010, so couldn't have been before that, but...
Yeah. Policy may, may not be exactly the right word, but it has certainly been that way in practice.
Okay. And that makes sense because we aren't generally in the practice of, of budgeting for what is potentially one-time money, right? So that does make sense, but I think that we may want to look at that moving forward in response to the passage of 2A. I'm, I'm very optimistic about that. So anyway, I just, I was, that just struck me. I don't have any issue with it. So 8.4 million fund balance includes the 1.7 surplus from this year. And then my only final suggestion that I wish I would have been able to make in October is that if we go to the, I think it's the, wherever the Quincy Farm maintenance money comes from, whichever of those parks, is it the Parks and Rec Fund or the?
Catherine Anderson Land.
And I know this has come up several times in various conversations. Now that we have approved a plan to move forward with the land preserve, and I, I know that we have the funds that they have suggested in their plan allocated in the budget. But once we have people using the east side of the property, I would be open to spending more on general maintenance on that side of the property, in particular, weed management. When we have people wandering around and using the property and it's all just weeds. So $20,000 doesn't seem like enough money to me to really address that problem. And since we do have some additional funds, I would be willing to entertain an increase in that number.
Sure, okay. The, a couple of, couple of thoughts. The sewer business, I certainly agree with what's been said before. It seems to me if you look at that as a business and you're trying to move it to get somebody else to acquire it, having a business that's profitable is going to be an easier way to get rid of it than having something that's losing money and they're taking on a burden. So we may want to take a closer look, a little more timely basis on the, the rates that we charge and how we can get that to a positive, at least a break even, get it to a positive. Hopefully, I think it'll help us unload that if we've got a good P and L. The vehicle side of things, I certainly agree with Katie's. I didn't feel picked on. I, I agree with your comment. I, I think that having a placeholder for charging stations makes some sense. I have heard various plans, and frankly, it's hazy in my mind. You know, I don't know that putting one at the city center, City Hall is as beneficial as putting it over at public, the public safety building. So I, I think having a placeholder doesn't trouble me so much as having a clearer vision of what are we trying to accomplish with that. I don't think we're in the business of, you know, free electricity for residents or, or those sorts of things so much as taking care of our own needs. That brings me to the vehicle question, and I would like us to take a long, hard look. I understand that electric vehicles are not suitable for all applications. On the other hand, and I also know that it's hard to get out of one's paradigm. You know, this is what I'm used to, this is what I know, and as a result, you know, I just want to keep doing more of same. Change, you know, change is tough. But I think we should approach it as, how are we going to approach it from why it shouldn't be an electric vehicle rather than why we should make a conversion from gas to electric? There, that technology is continuing to grow, develop, develop, and the vehicles are continuing to develop. And I think that, yeah, we, we should put the charger to work is what I'm thinking, you know, by having some electric vehicles. So I'd like, like us to really develop the, make sure there is a need to buy an internal combustion engine before we take that step and commit ourselves for multiple years with that vehicle before we can roll out of it and get another bite at that apple. So those, those are the two comments. Beyond that, I think it's a terrific job. I mean, you guys have done a fine job on the budget and the preparation, and I'm, you know, we've, we've gone over it, and I think it's, it's a good budget. My congratulations to you and all the department heads that worked on it, and Chris.
I just a couple of questions. The variable message board, what is that?
Jay said, for an example, you would be like a smaller CDOT message board, and I did not go online.
Event coming up. Please be aware, bicycle traffic.
Where's that, is that going to be on?
Yeah.
Street changing, trail work ahead.
Special events. We can identify special events. Could be anything.
Where's it, always, it's movable.
It's movable. That's right. It's on wheels. Yes.
$10,000, that's, that's a good, good deal. I had another question that occurred to me too. What, have we received some money from the Broncos sale?
We did. We received some, some money with lots of strings attached.
And what, what, I'm curious, but I, I just had to follow.
Emily is a resident expert at this point.
Our resident expert and not having guidance yet. Yes, so we're receiving about $25,000 from that sale. We are still working with the district to determine what the exact specifications are about how to spend that money. The only guidance we have at this time is that it needs to be spent on youth programs. Since we don't have youth programs, I'm in contact with a few other local jurisdictions that also don't have youth programs. So we will be working with them to really narrow down what we can use that for. You know, could we use it for some park equipment that will be appropriate for kids or that type of thing? So we're still waiting to get firm guidance, but yes, we will get about $25,000.
The Metropolitan Football Stadium District does not have a lot of experience at programming for local jurisdictions. They are very good at stadium building. This is a new arena for them, no pun intended. So, if I could offer one more follow-up, just as a discussion item regarding the electric vehicles and the fleet at large, really. The, the electric vehicle and the charging stations are not the only issues that have come up surrounding fleet overall. You know, I will just say, and Jay's not here, this is not really about, you know, pumping up public works with Jay here. You know, I don't know if you drove on our roads this morning. I drove, and it took me 50 minutes to get from my house to the border of Cherry Hills Village, and then it took me six minutes to get here. The roads were phenomenal, and a big part of that is because of our crew. But we also have good equipment. And I know that it's a constant conversation that they have about making sure that we have the best equipment available. I'm going to suggest to City Council and to Jay, who's not here, I'd like to see him try and stop me, that we have a study session about fleet and a big picture study session, almost a policy level study session, so that City Council can offer some input into, into our big picture fleet operations. Not so that you can micromanage, you know, individual car choices or truck choices, but so that you can provide some policy direction about our overall fleet approach. We could then incorporate... We could then incorporate EV charging stations into that presentation. Does that sound all right?
I think that's a great, great idea.
And I'm just going to go ahead and throw out there for managing expectations, probably second quarter is the earliest we will be able to get to that, so just.
So that would be a, that'd be a 2024 budget?
Correct. It would all be a preparation for, I don't think we actually have a scheduled, a scheduled vehicle that could be electric. We don't have one scheduled for replacement until the 2424 budget, so I think it's okay.
Well, you've got a couple hundred thousand dollars of police vehicles and other things in there that I think, you know, we should, we should be sure we all are in concurrence.
I understood. You know, I think that in our previous conversations, our police department has done some research into the opportunities for EV. And, you know, the feedback that they found out, as far as the latest information I have, is that there is not a good application right now for police vehicles. It sounds like they're getting closer, but the nature of how they use those vehicles is not, that Venn diagram isn't perfect yet, so. And Chief, I don't know if you have any additional information or insight that I don't have.
I thought that was a great summary. I had the opportunity to meet with all of the police vehicle manufacturers in October at a conference I was at in Dallas, and that conversation centered around EV technology. It's developing, you know, that's all where all the research dollars are going, and the automotive world is to transition to EV for a police vehicle. There are two major concerns. One is the duration of hot seating those vehicles. So our vehicles run nearly 24 hours a day, certainly on the 12-hour shift, at minimum of 12 hours a day. And the ability to stop and charge, well, it could pose challenges that takes that unit out of service. The other issue is the amount of electronics that go into a police vehicle, lights, sirens, radars, all light bar, all of those things. The capacity for that system to take in all of that electrical input isn't developed fully yet. But it is the direction, to your point, council member, it is where all the research dollars are going. There is likely a time in our future where we're going to see those, in the next few years, two to three years probably.
Well, at the study session, let's look at the facts. You know, let's make sure that we know how many, how many miles are traveled in a shift, how many hours of idling, what the draw is, that the battery isn't sufficient to cover that, or is it? You know, and those kinds of questions, I think we really need to get, get ourselves immersed in the pros and cons.
How many non-patrol vehicles? I mean, you have like the code enforcement truck, and is that it, or are there others?
There are two code enforcement vehicles currently. Neither are scheduled for replacement in the next year or two. There is one administrative vehicle, detective vehicle, which absolutely could move to EV when it is due for replacement. And then the, my vehicle, the chief's administrative vehicle, certainly could move to EV when it is due for replacement. We are currently running our patrol fleet, and we are very conservative on vehicle replacement. Every vehicle that is up for replacement is north of 100,000 miles, which is unusual for a police fleet. So we extend the life of our vehicles to a degree that many organizations don't. But when that replacement comes on those administrative vehicles, I would, I would absolutely support moving to EV technology, as have many other local jurisdictions, on those types of vehicles. On the patrol vehicles, as I mentioned, and this was a topic of conversation in my conference, it's absolutely in the near future, where the capacity of those battery systems and the electrical systems will be able to take that input from all of those additional systems that are installed after manufacturing. So that's a, we receive the vehicle and then we add a bunch of electronics to it. That's where the disconnect currently is, no pun.
Okay. And it is just a placeholder. Obviously, it makes sense as a placeholder, you don't have to spend it, but it gives you that opportunity if something happens next year.
I will just say one additional item on this topic. The chief is absolutely correct regarding our approach and usage of our fleet in regards to getting mileage out of them. The ghost of Jim Thorson still lives on strong to this day. That absolutely was a point of pride for him, and we still adhere to that approach today.
Well, you haven't, you haven't crashed too many of them either, have you? Which is good, that's good. All right, we need to open a public hearing now? I will, is 7:40. I will open the public hearing for any comments from the public about the 2023 budget. And we have no sign-ups, not a, nothing. Anybody here wish to speak? If not, forever hold your peace. We will close the public hearing at 7:41 then, and then I will entertain a motion on the council, on the two council bills, motions on the two council bills.
I move to approve Council Bill 14, Series 2022, a bill for an ordinance adopting a budget and levying property taxes for the city of Cherry Hills Village, Colorado for fiscal year 2023 on first reading.
Second.
Any discussion?
Did we want to talk about adding some budget to Quincy Farm for maintenance above the $20,000 that's currently allocated for the year?
I would like to, but it could be done as part of the, or I guess I should, that should be included in the motion. I don't know, how do other people feel?
I think it's a great idea, especially to make sure that it is consistent with the programming that's going to take place. And we want to make darn sure that we, as a city, are supporting land preserves in their efforts.
I might just ask Emily if she could just provide a little bit of context about what we are currently doing, and so that if council decides to start talking about specific numbers, you have some context and background to know what, where we are, at least today.
Yes, so specific to weed management, we do, we do, we have included in this year's budget continuing to work with Weed Wranglers, which is a company that we worked with this year to begin treating the east side of Quincy Farm. We did hold off this year on that east side, besides one treatment, because the land preserve was having programming out there involving goats, so we didn't want to treat and then have them on the property. So at this time, we've reseeded those pastures in the last two weeks with a mixture to start to establish some grass and forbs and wildflowers, hopefully, in those pastures. It is going to be a multi-year process, though. So additional funds would allow us to maybe have Weed Wranglers come out more often, might allow for an additional seeding in the spring, and that type of thing, so it would be a help.
Emily, what would you, if you could, make a recommendation? What would be a reasonable amount to increase that budget by?
If we are talking about Weed Wranglers specifically, I think that $10,000 would be sufficient. I think that would at least let us double the treatments that we're going to be sitting out there.
And Doug, without having that specific sheet up on our screens, I think we had a significant reserve that we could afford to reallocate 10,000 out of the reserve back into more maintenance?
Definitely, yes, and we can make that change for the second reading.
So let me change the motion then to.
Real quick. Chris. Mayor Parton Brown, I apologize. Maybe just another option for council to consider is if that's a direction council would like to go, great, let us actually get us some, do some background and homework with Weed Wranglers and maybe additional stuff, and bring a number back to you that you could then change for second reading, as opposed to locking it in tonight.
It would also be beneficial, I think, for us to consult with the Cherry Hills Land Preserve and make sure that whatever they are planning for programming, if any of that has been, you know, altered in any way, that we can accommodate any extra needs that they have for maintenance as well.
I wasn't going to, I wasn't going to insert any number. I was just going to tack on to the end of that, you know, with the discussed changes to the maintenance for Quincy Farm. To be proposed by staff for second reading.
We will have a better number to then plug in in the second reading.
That's probably on Council Bill 15, not 14, though, but.
Yes, you're right, you're right. Levying tax, that has nothing to do with taxes. Yes, thank you.
So we have a motion of second, any further discussion? If not, do we need a roll call on this?
Please, roll call.
Counselor Will?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
Now, we have, that passed, now we have Council Bill 15, Series 2022.
I move to approve Council Bill 15, Series 2022, a bill for an ordinance of the city of Cherry Hills Village, Colorado, authorizing appropriations for fiscal year 2023, including a staff proposed, a staff suggested amendment to the Quincy Farm maintenance budget to be provided for second reading on first reading.
Second.
We'll just second, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call, Laura, please.
Counselor Will?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Those passed on first reading, we'll bring them up again in December. Then new business continued, Council Bill 16, Series 2022, amending Section 64230 of the municipal code concerning tree replacement requirements. And this is first reading, this is simply to, under our procedures, to see whether there's enough here to proceed to a second reading, so. Let's see, who's, Mr. Workman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of council. The next item on your agenda, as was just alluded to, is related to maximum size of tree, of replacement trees within our code. This is the first reading. Council may recall that in July of this year, we had a study session with council to talk about the city's tree preservation and mitigation requirements. That is in Section 16-4-230 of our municipal code. That was included as an exhibit within your packets this evening. And really, this came about due to the last few years, council receiving contacts from residents regarding the removal of trees on private property. So in order to better understand the city's current regulations for tree removal, council requested a study session with us, which was the result of July 19th. At that study session, council asked questions about the applicability of the tree replacement requirements, how staff reviews submitted plans for compliance, and how staff enforces the approved plans during inspection. At the conclusion of that study session, we did receive direction from council that there was not a desire to make significant changes to the tree preservation requirements, but that the requirement that there was a maximum caliper tree size for replacement didn't seem to fit the needs of our community, and there was some direction for us to remove that from the text of the language. So we have drafted that amendment. It did go to the Planning and Zoning Commission last month in October. In addition to the removal of that maximum tree requirement, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that the preceding section to the maximum tree requirement be amended to increase the clarity of the statement that trees have to be replaced in the aggregate and not just as a one-off. And so in an effort to do that, the language that's highlighted and underlined on the screen here is proposed to be added, noting that removed trees must be, must be replaced in the aggregate as provided in the table. The table is provided on the slide and in your packet. There's no proposed changes to that, it's just provided for some additional context for you all. So getting to the amendment that was directed by council, all replacement trees shall have a minimum caliper size of two inches, and then we would strike through and remove a maximum caliper size of two and a half inches, so it would just read, all replacement trees shall have a minimum caliper size of two inches at the time of planting. That would conclude staff's presentation. The recommended motion is in your packet as well as on the screen in front of you. That concludes my presentation, but I'm certainly available for questions you all may have.
Any questions, Counselor Blum?
I do. Can you explain what you mean by the aggregate? Let's say 10 trees are removed, they're a certain caliber. What do you mean by the aggregate? Do all 10 have to replace, or can you explain how that works?
Sure. So based on the table there, the code basically says there's, there's four types of trees that we consider, although there's only three columns there. If it's under six inches diameter at breast height, which is what DBH stands for, there's no mitigation required. If it's a small tree, which is between six and 10, then two caliper inches is required. If it's medium, which is between 10 and 20, then six caliper inches is required, and large, 20 inches or more. You have to replace 10 inches. So if you replace, let's just say, two, if you remove two 20-inch trees, you have to replace 20 aggregate caliper inches of trees, with no tree being less than two caliper inches. The way the code currently reads is you could only do a two or two and a half, where removing this language would then allow them to replace a five caliper tree in addition to some two caliper trees, or whatever, however that math would work.
Well, under that scenario, if you remove two 20-inch trees, you'd have to get 20 inches in the aggregate, and that can be 10 trees under that scenario.
That's correct.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
In our current code, it would have to be 10 trees, right?
That's correct.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yeah.
We're done? You know, I think, I think this is fine. I'm great with, with P and Z's additional change. I think we are still not addressing, I guess, the elephant in the room about whether we're going to mandate that a resident or property owner be allowed to or mandate that they have to mitigate trees on their property that are not in their building envelope, right? That's the bigger issue. That's the issue, I think, that Fred's, Fred Wolf talked to us about, and the timing of that mitigation. And I don't know that we get far enough here, and I think on this issue, I'm really, I'm really quite torn, and I don't, the torn piece of it is back to what Katie suggested a couple months ago, when she said she didn't want to get into messing with private property rights. And I think I'm summarizing what you were saying. But I don't think anyone in this room is going to say that they're okay with what happened at the corner of Franklin and Quincy. So I don't know what the answer is. I'm not, I don't think that this alone is the answer, what we've got in front of us today. And I'm not, I'm not saying that you guys, that staff's not done an adequate job in this because you're looking for direction from this body. I don't know what the direction is, I'm not sure that this satisfies it for me. And I might leave it at that for now, and hopefully we maybe have some better dialogue amongst the rest of the council members.
Counselor Gallagher, thoughts?
Yeah, it, to address the timing, as Fred points out, you know, it takes no time at all to cut down a tree, and that's the easy part. And so if we put some teeth into it to keep these trees up for some, we've got to have, we've got to tie it into some, something that's concrete, be it, you know, a start of construction, tied to a permit timing. But my point is, it takes no time at all to cut down trees, so keep the canopies up as long as possible. And that is my point, is that let's, let's figure out some way that we can write language that will delay the cutting of the trees, because, again, I'm going to say it a third time, it takes no time at all to cut down a tree and get it out of there. That's the easy part. And it's unfortunate, because that all took place way, way ahead of time.
Meaning that if they were to go get their building permit, there's plenty of time just to call, call for the tree demolition company to come out and tear them down?
Yeah, I mean, that is.
Right. And what about the issue of, I'm sorry, do you mind if I ask you a question? How do we deal with the issue of building, of taking trees down that are outside of the building footprint? Right? So along the edges of the, of the property?
Right, those should be the last ones. If you're going to take them down, those should be the last ones. I mean, inside the building, inside the setbacks, we have no, the code is really clear. We have no say there. And, but I think you could still tie for the edification of the environment.
So your thought is we don't, there's no way for us to tell them what trees they can or cannot take down? It's more, it's purely a function of timing?
I mean, that's, that's the big issue, is the timing of it. Yeah, the code is really clear, you know, as to what you can and can't take down. And I just, the point is, delay it as long as possible.
Counselor Brown?
Yeah, I think, and I'm totally with you, and I absolutely agree that.
Yeah, I think, and I'm totally with you, and I absolutely agree that, and I, ever since we've had that conversation, it has been flowing through my mind, how do we prevent that, but still allow for other scenarios that, you know, that would be acceptable? You buy the lot next door. You tear down the house with no intention of ever building another house there, because you want, just, you want open space. You want a pasture for your horse. So, you can't start with the assumption that every project is going to have construction on it. Did those people ever even pull a permit? I don't think they ever did.
We have not received a permit.
Yeah, so, maybe they, you know, and I understand. I know, Fred. I know. I know. Well, I totally understand. So, the challenge is, how do we prevent that, but still allow people to do what they might legitimately want to do with their own property? And one thing that had, that was suggested by another resident, that maybe is an area where we could find some compromise, is much like, and it kind of was brought on by the fence discussion, what if there was a different treatment of trees that are in the setbacks along public right-of-way? It wouldn't have prevented them from cutting down every tree on that lot. They could have cut down the ones in the back, up against the fence, but they couldn't have cut down the ones, perhaps, and thinking out loud is always dangerous, but perhaps they couldn't have cut down the ones that were adjacent to the street without some sort of
Trigger.
Permit or trigger or something.
Okay, but not allowing them to cut them down, just timing it?
Or some, yeah, some sort of, you have to go get a permit, and you have to explain what you're doing, and you, I don't know. I mean, I just don't know, but yeah.
Let me ask this question. Let's say somebody bought that house, and they decided to tear the trees down anyway. They kept the house there.
Yeah, they just don't want the trees.
Does this ordinance then apply to anybody in particular, or is this tied to the?
It would not apply. Again, the three times that the tree mitigation, preservation requirements come into play, construction of a new home, major addition, so 50% or more of an addition, or 12 months within either of those first two. So, if somebody purchased a home and wanted to cut down every tree on the property and not touch the home, we wouldn't have anything.
We have no control over that.
We wouldn't have anything.
So, we lose the canopy. Okay, Fred.
Counselor, yeah, Will.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I mean, it occurs to me that if I think about this in terms of the life of the property, we're managing trees at one moment, that slice of time when the tree, when the permit is being pulled, there's some construction activity, and the rest of it is kind of a free-for-all. And it hits me, it's like, what's the point, then, of managing it at that one point in time if, six months, a year later, they can do whatever they want, or before that, they can do whatever they want? I understand private property rights as a hot-button issue as well. It feels to me like, rather than, you know, a little bit of rearranging the deck chairs here, you know, rather than that, maybe what we should do is start to reach out in an organized way and get some public opinion about where the community stands on this issue. Because, I mean, I can tell you personally where I stand on it. I don't think it's a good idea to cut trees down and level property and all the rest of it. And I do think that there is an issue that extends beyond that property. They're infringing on other people's rights in some respects. So, it feels to me like this is a big enough issue, and it's important enough because of the nature of the place and what we're trying to preserve, that starting to talk about where we might, where the residents might be comfortable with respect to the boundaries of what the city should, what position the city should, what role the city should have, what positions we should take, I think is, in my opinion, overdue. You know, it's been a hot button and a festering thing, and maybe it's time we just suck it up and deal with it. My thoughts?
I think, I think that's right. The original reason for this tree ordinance was we had spec builders coming in, and it's easier for them to tear out the trees because, you know, construction, right? And they had no sense for the buyer, you know, it didn't make a dollar's difference to them, and we just lost real valuable assets because they didn't care, because they weren't going to live there. They were going to spec build, and they were going to be out of there. So, that's why this started. And the problem with this one was, it was so odd. I mean, you wouldn't think that people would come in and just chop down trees. I mean, it's, how would you, who would do that? It's like, that's just so, it's such an odd, bizarre case, and then leave the stumps there like some kind of Lorax thing, you know? It's, so it's the worst-case kind of scenario, and it really does meet property rights and everything else. But I do think that there's something we can, well, one thing we could do is deed restrictions. I mean, if we have people with their own property that have valuable trees, they could put a real deed restriction on their property, saying you can't take those out, right? So, that's one solution. That's a private property kind of solution that would work. A public one is harder to do, except we can't really tell them they can't do that. What we can do is say, "If you're going to be doing this, you have to come to us first. Please, come to us first," you know, and go through a process. Ultimately, if they decide to take them out, they can. But at least if they come to us first, we can say, "Wait, don't do it now," right? You know, timing is everything, right? So, you know, let's think about this first. If that had happened, if there had been some procedure for that, that's what I think we're struggling for, to see if there's something we could do to implement that kind of a policy that we require. I don't know what it is, because it is so strange, unique, to try to get, force somebody to come in. How would it trigger? I mean, you could call up the tree company, then come and take them all down. We don't have any, they aren't building a house. They aren't doing anything. They're not, there's no latch there, crux there to get them, to get their attention to it. So, it's a tough, tough problem, and I do agree that there's maybe some, maybe some solutions, and if we could figure out some way of announcing. It's just too bad they didn't ask us first, or didn't ask their neighbors first, maybe, you know?
Mayor?
Well, I just, like, I think there's been some really good discussion here tonight, but I think I could spend a little more time researching what options, if any, what measures would be defensible, you know, and supportable, before we range out into public opinion and things of that nature.
Yeah, and one other thing that we've done historically on issues where we don't really, we're navigating uncharted water, is gone out to other jurisdictions and asked them how they're doing it. I assume we have not done that yet?
No, we didn't.
No, we did.
We're one of the few people that even has any kind of replacement.
Did you check with Parker? I mean, I know you know Parker. They've got trees like we have trees.
They do, and so, I have done research. I have not done research outside of the state of Colorado, but I will say that it is, we are the one community that I found that has a tree preservation requirement for residential construction. It's much more common for commercial, for essentially non-residential, excluding multifamily. Multifamily usually has that, but multifamily, commercial, industrial development, it is particularly odd to have one specifically for residential development.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it's crazy for all of us in the room here. We think it's completely odd not to have one.
Right.
In our community, there should absolutely be something out there.
We're on the cutting edge, though. We're pushing the envelope already, with whatever you want, just so you know that.
I get it.
But the other thing we could always do, you could always pay for it. I mean, if you compensate them for their property, you can take it, right? You could want to buy it. I mean, I'm just telling you what the options are, you know?
That would be constitutional.
I think when City Attorney Guckberger mentions doing some additional research into the viability of this, that's really what we're starting to get at here. We want to make sure that whatever options you guys are considering are going to hold up, if that makes sense.
And there is some case law where communities have attempted to pass ordinances, saying you can't take those down, and the courts have said, "You can't, you pay for it, but you can't do that without paying for it."
So, I would suggest, then, that what we have in here is accretive to the city. It's
good. It's additive, and I think we should approve it tonight. It does, there's no reason not to approve this, and then continue with that research, and let's try to, let's try to beef this up somehow over the course of the next few meetings to see if there's anything we can do to add a little bit of teeth to it.
Great. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve on first reading Council Bill 16, Series 2022, a bill for an ordinance amending Section 16-4-230 of the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code concerning tree replacement requirements.
Can I just interject as a point of clarification for those that will be doing the research? Is council interested in to beef it up? Are you interested in, I'll call it, consequences for removal of trees, or discouraging the removal of trees? Can you give us just a little more direction on that so that we can come back and meet the expectation of council?
I would say certainly the timing of it, and then, secondly, if there is anything, do we need to be punitive? Is there, if something is on line, deemed that a law?
And my, Paul, my question, I guess, would be, do we need to limit ourselves to the moment in time that somebody decides to build a house or add an addition, you know, or are there broader horizons that we could pursue timewise?
And again, just for clarification, are you interested in private property owner not doing construction wants to remove a tree? Do we get a say in that?
Exactly.
Okay.
One other question or idea, and I don't know if this is appropriate at all, but similar to what we did with our master planning process when we create a citizens advisory task force, is that taking this too far? I mean, I'm just sitting here thinking of Kate and Fred sitting here in the room, and maybe we get a citizens group together that wants to volunteer a little bit of time, a couple hours, to get together a couple different times, and present something back to council. But it's got to be realistic. It's got to be something that we can, you know, defend and substantiate, and it can't be, hey, nobody can do this, period, hard stop. We have to keep in mind the balance of power here with development and private property rights.
And the law, I mean.
And the law.
I think we start there.
Oh, yeah. Counselor Will, please.
Dan, that's, I think that's a great idea. I mean, that's what I was, I'm not suggesting that cities should just willy-nilly impose its will on private property owners. On the other hand, if we reach a consensus as a city that, you know, this is important to the character, preserving the character of the place, then it makes sense for us to take action. We have authority, in a sense, to do it. But we've got to get that public input, you know, to validate that. I don't think we should do it on our own.
Mayor, oh, sorry. I just thought, if I could provide you all with options of what is feasible and what is available, that could maximize the utility of everyone's time before they start considering options that might not be on the table.
So, we don't do blue-sky planning that's not legal?
Yes, that's what my biggest concern is.
The other thing, to answer your question, I think, is, is there anything we can do to stop what happened? I mean, you know, those options, I don't want to box you in. I am. What are the, what can we do, if anything? I don't know. It may take creative thinking.
One additional, just sort of tacking on to what Paul said about coming back and doing further research. When we had this study session to vet this issue with city council, where you provided the direction to come back with this issue, there was a fair amount of discussion regarding the viable and reasonable reasons why someone might remove trees. And there was actually a pretty robust conversation about that. You know, if we start getting into adding additional language on top of what we're doing, we are going to, by definition, have to then add additional language protecting all those viable reasons that you outlined before. So, it will grow, the whole tree, the tree discussion, the tree, us wading into that topic will grow by definition, because we will not be able to prevent someone from removing a hazard tree, a diseased tree, trees that are planted too close to each other and choking each other out. There's a whole, and I'm not an arborist, so I am not qualified to say what all those are. We will have to get somebody who is. So, we're going to have to then create a series of exceptions and yada, yada, yada. I'm just preparing you for the upcoming conversation as it exists.
I have a motion from Counselor Brown. He has a second.
Sorry, Mayor. I know it's a little out of the ordinary, but I think we've done it in the past on other topics. Would it be appropriate to potentially bring up somebody from the public if they wanted to speak at this point? I know it's not a public hearing, but if we're such a small community, and our community wants to speak about this, and there's somebody out there who wanted to speak on this?
I'm fine with that, but I do need a second before we do anything.
You were looking for a second?
I was looking for a second. I second the motion. All right. So, now discussion, I'm more than happy to have, if anybody wants to speak to this?
Fred, I saw you, like, biting your tongue, wanting to come up and speak.
Raise your hand. You can go ahead and speak.
Thank you, Mayor.
Excuse me, was there just a vote, a motion and a second?
Not to...
Oh, I just heard a second.
Oh, I...
I read the motion.
There was a motion?
You read the motion. I seconded.
Oh, on the ordinance itself?
On the ordinance itself.
Not a motion on someone speaking.
No, no, no.
Okay, Fred. Let's hear it if you guys...
You're making great progress, seriously. This is what we needed to do. One thing, I think, if you think about that lot over there, the thing that really got people really stirred up is the trees that were this big were just taken down. The trees that are this big, not so much concerned, but these huge cottonwoods and elms that were taken down, that provide a canopy out over Franklin Street, that goes right along with our city charter, our love of trees. We want to preserve the trees. If somebody comes in and says, "I've got this property, but I've got this huge tree that I really want to take down," then maybe they should get a permit from the city when they've demonstrated their need to take that tree down. Is it diseased? The cottonwoods that drop all the snow, cottonwoods, I mean, my children were allergic to that growing up. And I did take down some cottonwoods in my yard way back in 1989, and now my evergreens are 60 feet high. But maybe for these huge trees, it's an additional step to come to the Cherry Hills and say, "I need a permit. At least I need to talk to you, and you talk to me about why you want to keep it, and if I can demonstrate a legitimate reason for taking it down." Those people sawed those trees down. I don't think they asked anybody. They were just gone one morning, and everybody thought, "Oh, okay, well, they're going to break ground, you know? They're going to build a house." And here we are. So, that's just something to keep in mind. If you do go back and look at research, and Kate and I were just pulling things up on our phone in Florida and in Texas, they do have this permit system for trees of a certain caliper that the owner has to come back and tell the jurisdiction, "Here's why I want to take that down." So, it's an additional check and balance, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Fred. Thank you, Fred. That's a good point. I mean, the size of the trees is obviously a big issue, but that's...
If you have that information, could you send the, great. Yeah, thank you.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a, this is just a, this is a roll call, too. Roll call.
Counselor Will?
Reluctant, yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes. Next on the agenda is item 10C, which is a public hearing on Council Bill 17, Series 2022, to rezon a parcel land owned by Brave Engwood, number two, from R4 to R1. I'm planning to manage your work when you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you just alluded to, the next item on your agenda is a rezoning on first reading. One of the Planning and Zoning Commissioners joked that this may be the most rezoned parcel in the city of Cherry Hills Village, and I would venture to say that that individual is correct. As a refresher, more for those that may be watching than for council, this property is located at the southwest corner of Hampden Avenue and Monroe Street. It's about 3.3 acres in size. To the north is the city and county of Denver. To the east is the Brave Church Primary Facility. To the south, the single-family detached homes known as the Covington Neighborhood. To the west is the High Line Canal with single-family homes beyond, which is the Devonshire Neighborhood. Denver First Church of the Nazarene previously owned this property, as well as the church facility across Monroe Street, and a vacant corner of Jefferson in Colorado, I believe. As part of the approval to expand the primary church facility across the street from this parking lot, they were required to construct this parking lot, and the property has remained as a parking lot since 2013 or 14, whenever that construction concluded. In March of last year, council heard three applications submitted by Denver First Church of the Nazarene. They were all three independent and separate from each other, but they were heard together as they were dependent on one another. The first application that council heard was a site plan amendment to remove the requirement to have the 264 parking spaces on the subject property. property. Council approved this application, subject to two conditions. The first was that a shared parking agreement be executed within 90 days of council approval, and the second was that Denver First had to submit demolition information to applicable review agencies and notify the Covington HOA prior to any demo work. The second independent application was a request to rezone the subject property from R1 to R4, which would allow for the applicant, Denver First, to create four lots on the subject property that they had an intention to sell for development. That application was approved with no conditions. The third application that council approved was a preliminary plat, which is the second step in a three-step process to create new lots here in the village in order to subdivide the property into four lots. Council approved that application, subject to two conditions. First, that the final plat submittal needed to include final documents, such as a final drainage report, construction drawings, and similar. The second condition was that the applicant had to agree to terms of a subdivision improvement agreement as required by our The site plan amendment, if I'm sure council recalls, was extended twice by council, and the final extension was granted until April 30th of this year. Because the shared parking agreement was never executed, as conditioned by council, and because of the language in 167285A, which is on the screen in front of you, the site plan amendment approval is null and void. Second application, the rezoning application, because of the language in 167285C, rezonings do not lapse. Therefore, the zoning was and is effective as an R4 property. The third application, because of the language in 173130B, the approved preliminary plat is null and void because there was no final plat ever submitted within 12 months of approval of the preliminary plat. Since the approvals that were granted to Denver First last year, they have sold the subject property to Brave Church, who desires to keep the parking lot as currently constructed and rezone the property back to R1. This is necessary as the current R4 zoning designation does not allow for a place of assembly in their associated parking, but the R1 zone district does. Section 16240B lists the specific criteria staff uses to analyze a request for a rezoning, the planning and zoning commission used to make their recommendation to you this evening, and city council must use to approve, approve with conditions, or deny a rezoning request. Staff would like to acknowledge that much of the language in the detailed analysis contained in your packet this evening was used previous, was used in the previous zoning request, and that was done intentionally. Whether the property is owned R1 and used for parking to support the church activities across South Monroe Street, or if it's owned R4 and developed with single-family homes, the desired character of the area and the predominant land uses in the area remain the same. The character and predominant land uses would remain, as they exist today, a mix of single-family homes and churches with their accessory parking lots. Would like to note also that the code only requires one of these criteria be satisfied, not all of them. Related to public comment, today, staffs received two phone calls from folks that were neither in support or opposition, but just wanted some more information. And additionally, there were letters of support contained in your packet this evening from a couple individuals in the Covington Neighborhood. The planning and zoning commission held a public hearing on October 11th of this year. The commission asked some logistical questions related to the expiration of the site plan amendment and the preliminary plat. They also wanted to confirm that the rezoning was necessary in order for the underlying zoning to allow for the parking lot. Staff was able to confirm this information. At the conclusion of their hearing, the commission voted five to zero to recommend approval for this rezoning with no conditions. The recommended motion on first reading is contained in your packet, as well as on the slide in front of you. That would conclude staff's presentation. However, I am available for any questions. The applicant is also, a representative of the applicant is also in the audience and prepared to answer any questions council may have.
Any questions for staff? Council Blum? Council Sheldon? Nope. Council Brown, Council Wheel. We've all been part of this for a long, long time, so I think we know it. Okay. If there's no other, oh, this is a public hearing. All right. I then will open the public hearing. It is, I have 8:19. And Mr. Norton, welcome back. Good to see you again.
Nice to be here. Thank you very much. It's been a very interesting meeting. Thank you for allowing me to sit in. I am an elder, would be, from a corporate perspective, board of directors member. We call them stewarding elders of Brave Church. I'm also attorney for Brave Church on a total pro bono basis. So I'm here at my pleasure for my church. And I just want to give you a couple of comments about some of the things we've done around Brave Church with regard to the neighbors and also in terms of cooperation with Cherry Hills Village. First of all, I want to give a shout out to Chief Lyons and the police department here for the support and help they've provided to us on Sunday mornings for traffic control. It's been a remarkable support and help to keep the traffic flow going smoothly in and out of the parking lots. We very much appreciate that, Chief. Secondly, we work very closely with the Covington HOA to do all we can to accommodate the neighbors in Covington in particular with issues that are of concern to them. And it would be, it's helpful to me to show you this blow up of the map. I hope you can see it all. This is Hampden Avenue here. This is north. This is Colorado over on this side. This is the parking lot that we're talking about. So in terms of our dialogue with Cherry Hills Village, some of the things that we are talking about is, this is an older photograph. It doesn't quite look like this today. But this is the real entrance to the High Line Canal Trail right up here. Now, a lot of people, and there's parking along the street, I don't know if you've been, Jefferson or Monroe Street has parking signs that says trailhead parking in this location. But people tend to park down here in our parking lot to use a trailhead. And that disturbs the neighbors in Covington because they're cutting through this way to get to the trailhead. So we're talking with Mr. Workman and others, Mr. Kramer and others with the city about deeding this piece of ground, which is currently under a conveyance that's really a license agreement, as I recall, with the Cherry Hills Village. We're talking about deeding that to Cherry Hills Village and creating a much nicer trailhead entrance at that point in time, and also figuring out how we can accommodate the parking. We've been working very closely with Covington Neighborhood on traffic. When we first started meeting here at the old Nazarene Church facility, now Brave Church facility, people who wanted to go south on Colorado Boulevard would go through this Covington Neighborhood to get around and avoid this intersection of Colorado and Jefferson Avenue. So we put up a sign there. Mr. Jim Turner, who, by the way, has no relationship to the Bronco place kicker many years ago, lives right in this area here, and he told me a couple of months ago, I counted 50, he said, my wife, my wife counted 56 cars going by. So we put up a sign the next weekend, no church traffic through this. Now, you cannot stop people from driving on public streets and roads in our community. But I am told by the Covington neighbors that that has remarkably lowered the number of cars through that neighborhood. They also, in the Covington area, very, I call this a serpentine wall. It's a red brick wall that's to the south into this parking lot. They're very much interested in retaining that wall as a dividing barrier. So we have agreed to that. In fact, we offer to convey this wall, and this green strip here also belongs to Brave that's just south of the wall. We offer to convey that parcel to the Covington HOA or whatever organization would be appropriate to receive it. And they thought about it and studied it and said, no, we'd like for you to keep it and maintain it and so forth. So we've agreed to do that. We'll keep that wall there. There doesn't need to be a written agreement to that effect, but if ever anybody feels like there should be, we're prepared to do that. So this is the other access to the High Line Canal Trail, which everybody wants to keep. Now, we learned from Mr. Reggie, who lives right here, Pasquale Reggie, who is the vice chairman of the HOA, who also, that's one of the letters of support in your packet, along with Mr. and Mrs. Turner that live here, that, where was I going with that? Oh, this little strip of ground here actually is supposed to be maintained by Cherry Hills Village. So, and they had some ideas and concerns about it. But Mr. Workman has totally leapt on that. Kudos to Mr. Workman for his work and coordinate all of that. So that's some of the work we've done with the neighbors in Cherry Hills Village. We're doing the very best we can to cooperate with the neighbors. They like what we've done so far. We like them a lot. We want to keep that relationship. There's lots of other technical questions you may have, but I thought you would be interested in hearing those kinds of relationships that we've developed. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming. Any questions for Mr. Norton?
I don't have a question, but just having a long history with this property, that parking lot was my first council meeting ages ago. And I just wanted to commend you for the work that you have done with the neighbors. To see those letters of support was very meaningful to me, and it demonstrates the commitment that you've made to really establishing those relationships. And I just wanted to say thank you for that, really.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do want to be good neighbors, not only to our neighbors, but also to Cherry Hill Village. We plan to be there for a long time. For your information, we are dialoguing with the Plymouth Church about the possible acquisition of that church. Would make things a whole lot simpler for everybody if we owned the entire block there.
I wanted to ask you about that, too. That's good news. I'm glad you, is the Nazarene now, are they still?
We own the property that we call Brave South. Now, we still own that property, and the Nazarene Church currently is in a short-term lease in that property. It expires sometime in either April of 2023 or April of 2024. It depends on sort of some triggering issues. But we own that property, all the parking and so forth in that property, as well as part of the Brave. It's owned by a separate, single-member LLC. Brave is the member that controls the LLC. That's why you see the application under the Brave Inglewood Number Two LLC. But it's really Brave Church. For tax purposes, those are disregarded. LLCs are disregarded.
Very good. It sounds like your church is doing very well, as far as membership.
We're doing very well. And we left Cherry Hills Village, and we want to keep it that way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Unless there's anybody else wishes to speak at the public hearing, I will close the public hearing at 8:27. And unless there's any more discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Council Bill 17 Series 2022, a bill for an ordinance of the city of Cherry Hills Village to rezone a parcel of land owned by Brave Inglewood Number Two LLC, legally described as Lot 1, Block 1, amended plat of Lot 1, Block 1, High Line Meadows in Cherry Hills, from R4.5 acre residential district to R1, 2.5 acre residential district, and amending the official zoning map consistent therewith on first reading.
Second. Motion, second. Any further discussion? And I'll take a roll call, please, Laura. Thank you.
Councilor Wheel?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilor Sheldon?
Yes.
Councilor Blum?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. And thank you, Mr. Norton. I appreciate it. We are going to go into recess quickly from this meeting into a meeting of the Charlie Park Third Filing General Improvement District Board. So it's 8:28. I will go into recess. And I will now open a meeting of, and call to order the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village Charlie Park Third Filing General Improvement District Board. Do you want to take, let's take a roll call, please.
Board Member Safavi is absent. Board Member Wheel?
Happy to be here.
Board Member Brown?
Here.
Chair Stewart?
Here.
Board Member Gallagher?
Here.
Board Member Sheldon?
Here.
Board Member Blum?
Here.
I think we can jump down to item 16, which is new business. And this is a public hearing, Resolution 3, which is amending the 2022 budget. Director Farman, can you bring us up to speed, please?
Yes, I can. Good evening, Chairman Stewart and members of the board. Tonight, there are two public hearings and one presentation on the 2022 budget amendment and also the 2023 proposed budget. For the 2022 proposed budget amendment, during the 23 budget development, we discovered there was $67,000 in excess funds held by the district that was excess fund balance. Most of it was accumulated because the capital project in 2019 was actually under budget. Staff reviewed various options for which to best utilize these additional funds, and it was determined a bond prepayment of $67,000 would be the best use of the funds, as it would yield $64,000 of future interest savings to the district. The proposal is expected to also reduce the mill levy rate by approximately 33%. That's subject to final certification from the county. Because the bonds could not be redeemed till 2029 per the bond agreement, we contacted Academy Bank, who is the lone bondholder, and we needed their consent for the partial redemption and reamortization that the district staff had presented to them. They did formally consent to these changes, and it does reamortize the debt service schedule by eliminating two years. So instead of maturing in 2040, it matures in 2038 now. So the district board does have the previous and future debt service schedules in your packet this evening, and staff is recommending approval of Resolution 3, approving the 2022 budget amendment.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council to staff about this?
I've got just a couple of quick things on this. I think this is maybe the first time this has happened since I've been on council with any one of these GIDs. I think we've only really had them now for a short period of time. Do the neighbors have any, I know we're the board, and I don't know if there's any other uses of funds that you could do with this $67,000. Are there any other uses that this GID could use these monies for anything other than debt prepayment? And if the answer is no, then I won't need to ask my second question. If the answer is yes, is it incumbent upon us to ask the residents of this GID what they want to do with their money?
What is our function? I mean, are we?
We're the board.
Yeah, but what's our scope? I mean, are we limited to the underground?
That's exactly the question. Our council is.
Council is looking at what was voted on by the folks, but that, I can't find it right.
Okay.
See, that would go back to exactly the wording of what they approved. I suspect it has a restriction. I think it has a limitation. It can only be used for this purpose. I would be 99% certain of that, but I can't.
And then I assume the answer to my next question is no, but I just want to ask it anyway. This reamortization does not obviously trigger any repricing, right? The interest rate's not going to move at all because we're now cracking open this debt instrument?
Same interest rate, yes. You're correct.
All right. Well, with that question looming out there, which I doubt they could do anything with those monies otherwise, so I don't know that I need to take this line of questioning any further, but I wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, good.
But on that note, could it be refunded to them?
Could it be refunded? And would they want that? And should they be part of this decision? I know we're their board. We are also a small village, and there's only 17 of those owners, or 14 of them, or something like that, that are in this GID. I don't know that I'd love to get a call. These are my neighbors. I don't know that I'd love to get a call from one of these neighbors saying, hey, wait a minute. I would have appreciated getting my share, my.
You know, because keep in mind that.
$5,000 back.
Because that might be there, right? If they're not still living in that house in, what'd you say, 2040? Whoever's, whoever's living in that home gaining the benefit is going to be paying for it right now through 2040. And, you know, I don't know.
Didn't they reduce some mills?
This will in turn reduce the mills.
So they're getting them back anyway.
They're getting.
I would assume that would be amenable to them, but I think Dan raises a good point.
I don't know. We just haven't dealt with this because these GIDs are new for us, Doug. So.
Yeah, no problem. We did consult with the bond attorney, so there are some tax implications if the district just lets the money sit. Because, of course, these are bond proceeds that need to be spent within a certain timeframe. So we'd have to look to see if there's any arbitrage considerations. We did look at like a five-year holiday on the mill levy. But of course, this scenario that the bank agreed to provides the most savings to the district overall. So.
Maybe what I would suggest then is that we move to approve this and not even write in, not even amend the actual motion like you did on the last motion that you amended. Not even amend it, but just keep in mind that we maybe should have staff give us an answer back on this when they have some. give us an answer back on this when they have some time by the second hearing.
Do we, and was this meeting noticed to them in any specific way?
Just our general public notice procedures.
Yeah, okay.
No, so they wouldn't have gotten notice that we were meeting on a $67,000 refund.
Would it be possible to provide some sort of, hey, at the second reading of this is at our next meeting?
I don't think.
This is a resolution?
Oh, no, it's just the first reading.
This is not.
No ordinance.
Wait a minute, say that again.
There's no second reading.
There's no second reading.
This is it.
This is it.
If you want to, I mean, the option, the option, if you want to do it, you continue this until they can do it again. Oh, but then they didn't notice.
No, you can't, right? Because you need to pay the bank, the deadline.
The debt payment is due December 1st.
I would think, I would think you'd go for it.
Do it and, do it in mea culpa if there was another option.
I think this is the sensible, I think this is a sensible option. I can't imagine a better way. So I think.
Yeah.
All right. We do need to have a public hearing on this, though. Says, does anybody sign up?
I would just, I would say for future reference with these GID issues, if we're actually going to be considering something like that, I would appreciate if we give the GID heads up that we're doing that.
Well, we have the same thing coming up right now on, on.
I know, I just mean, and obviously, we can't do it for that either. I just mean, generally speaking, when there's GID business to be conducted.
Yeah, just a flyer that goes out to their neighborhood or to their HOA or whatever. Something to let them know that we're talking about business about their.
Their GID is meeting.
It's a nice problem for them to have because they're saving money. It didn't cost as much. It's usually the other way around. It's usually how we're going to pay for this cost exit. Doesn't happen. All right. I will open then the public hearing at 8:36. And I see that there's no one signed up to speak, and I assume no one here in the audience wishes to speak. So I will close it at 8:36 and entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Three, Series 2022, a resolution of the Cherry Hills Village Charle Park Third Filing General Improvement District, GID Board of Directors, amending the 2022 budget and approving the supplemental appropriations for the GID fund.
Second.
Roll call.
We can just do a voice vote?
Do we need a, a voice vote? I'm sorry. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye. Then let's take up New Business 16B, which is proposed budget. And this is be a public hearing as well. Director Farman, anything more to add?
Thank you. Yes, we have a resolution, series, Resolution Four, Series 2022, which will be considered by the board for the 2023 proposed budget, and that'll be on December 14th. The mill levy for this fund is estimated at 10.75 mils or $25,948 in property tax revenue for 2023. And the expenditures of $28,840 include the debt service payments, administrative expenses for staff time, auditing, and legal expenses. And the ending fund balance would be retained as the debt service and taper reserves. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Three tonight, which was done. Here are the next steps for 2023 budget adoption, which will be December 14th. Are there any questions by the board?
Just curious, why don't we, why don't we approve these GID budgets at the same time we do have them on schedule for the cities?
We.
We do. We, we're going to do the budget.
We decided, I guess it's been kind of the practice, do the public hearings one night, even on the GIDs, and then do the resolution adoption.
Got it.
At the next meeting.
Okay.
I asked the same question.
Do we want a public hearing on this as well? All right. Again, there's, I have no, let's see. Let me open the public hearing at 8:39. And once again, there are no signups for anybody to speak. So I will close the public hearing at 8:39. And then we're going to take this up then in December. Okay.
Back to what we were talking about. I think it's, I think, I don't know what other cities do. I don't know what protocol is with these GIDs. But, I mean, we're sitting here approving these budgets for where these people live. I think maybe noticing them somehow about what we're doing and what we're working on. If nothing else, just to have them, if somebody's interested, they could come in, sit and listen.
Well, I mean, the practice is exactly what's happening tonight, which is you serve as their board in an ex officio capacity, basically. By virtue of your seat on council, you serve on the board. And that's why we recess into this meeting and convene as such, and then the public agenda notices all of these meetings. So that, that is standard practice. I'm not saying, you know, can't get creative, but that, this is standard.
Yeah, I understand it's standard practice. It seems weird to me that these, I know most of these GIDs are 100 times bigger than this, right? They're not 17 people or 12 people or.
Right.
And you had to act.
From a practical standpoint, you can't go notice 20,000 in a GID. But it does seem a little odd that we've got these little neighborhoods, the Southmore, the Southmore GID for the overheading, undergrounding. They're such a small group of people. I will go out on a limb and suggest that one or two of them might actually show up for their budget hearing if they knew about it.
Well, you know, the thought crossing my mind, though, Dan, is that this is, I mean, seems to me more, more mechanical. You know, it's like, here's the interest you owe here, here's the levies you get. There's like whopping $3,000 of administrative expense. Not much to debate in a sense.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, Randy. I just.
I agree.
All right, all right, let's move on. I, I have 8:41. We will adjourn the meeting of the board of the Charle Park Third Filing District. And we will now call to order the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway General Improvement District. Call to order, please. Roll call, please.
Board Member Safavi is absent. Board Member Will?
Happy to be here.
Board Member Brown?
Here.
Chair Stewart?
Here.
Board Member Gallagher?
Here.
Board Member Sheldon?
Here.
Board Member Brown?
Here.
Okay, we're moving down to item number 23, New Business Public Hearing 2022 and 2023 proposed budgets and Resolution Three. Director Farman?
Good evening, Chair, Chairman Stewart and members of the board. Before the board this evening is a consolidated public hearing on the 2022 and 2023 proposed budgets. And as for the Southmore Hudson Parkway General Improvement District, staff is also recommending approval of the Resolution Three, Series 2022, adopting that budget this evening. In April of this year, as part of a citywide budget amendment, the city council approved the district's 2022 budget, but the board has yet to review, review and approve and adopt that budget. The district was formed to fund a utility undergrounding project for $182,061. This project will not be completed this year, so the board will see project funds re-appropriated in 2023. And the ending fund balance includes $10,000 for bond reserve and $4,067 for taper with the remaining project funds. So Resolution Four, Series 2022 will be considered by the board December 14th. And there is a public hearing tonight on the 2023, on the 2022 and 23 proposed budgets.
Can I ask you a quick question about that? Given the snags in the project, is there any concern that the project's going to go over budget?
What's the date today? As of today, whatever the date today is, we have no knowledge that that could have happened. Knowing what happened with Quincy, you know.
What happens if it goes over budget?
So the delays that were occurring today are not as a result of, you know, having conflicts or undergrounding directional issues. It's literally, as I understand it, the relocation of a couple of specific pieces of box, you know, of where the boxes go. It's not enlarging them, making them smaller. It's just where do they fit best? And they're having some scheduling snags on that. So as of today, we have no reason to expect any cost increases.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Any other questions for staff? Otherwise, I'll again, open for public hearing. It's 8:44. Last one, and that's, no one has signed up. So I will close the public hearing at 8:44. And would you like us to take a vote on? What exactly, Kathy? You want to?
On Resolution Three for the 2022.
Okay, on Resolution Three. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Three, Series 2022.
I move to approve Resolution Three, Series 2022, a resolution of the Cherry Hills Village Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway General Improvement District, Board of Directors summarizing expenditures and revenues in adopting a budget for the calendar year beginning on the first day of January 2022 and ending on the last day of December 2022.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? I'll take a voice vote, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Proposed? All right, that does it. We are adjourned at 8:45. We're adjourned from that, and we will reconvene the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village City Council. And mayor's report. I'm glad you stayed because I have something to say. I want to give my sincere congratulations to our mayor-elect Katie Brown and our councillor-elect, Mr. Holland, and Mrs. McGuire, and also Mr. Eber. My sincere congratulations, and oops, and we're cities in good hands, and you guys will be doing great. You take office, I think, the first meeting in January, which is going to be the 17th. I think before that time, there'll be some initiation rituals, also known as orientation, that are offered from Sursa and others, which would be, which are useful and. Anyway, my very sincere congratulations and best wishes for you and that council. That's all I have.
No report. No report. Just a quick reminder, when Laura, and we talked about this in the past, when it goes, when something goes quasi-judicial, give us a quick heads up, you know, in terms of, hey, this just dropped. Formal application just hit. No, no, I understand that. But some, sometimes the application is dropped, and we don't know it. And, and so.
Oh, you mean like, like it was, it happened yesterday, and you got a phone call from somebody last night?
Exactly.
You shouldn't be talking to them, but you didn't know it didn't apply.
That's exactly what I'm saying. Yeah. Thank you.
Counsel Will?
Thank you. Now that the cone of silence is lifted, I think all of you are aware, but two-way passed with a handy margin. We were about 59% so far, and I don't think there are enough votes out there to really make much of a difference. I also owe a big thanks to everybody here for all the support and leadership in your capacity as residents. You know, and I, special shout out to Mike. I think he went really above and beyond, did well. You as well, Susan and Earl. It's, it's, I think we did a good thing for the city collectively, and it was a team effort, so that's great. Beyond that, several transportation meetings, you know, between Dr. Cog and RTC and Rapaoh County Transit Forum. I'd say the big events are the third call of the tip, which is about $50 million, and that's been pretty well finalized, subject to board vote tomorrow night. There's been other changes, processes, improvements, and so on. Couple of pilot projects, community-based transportation planning and corridor planning that are, that are being developed by Dr. Cog and Socialized, and they're looking to move forward. There are about 60 corridors that were identified, and of those, about four have proposals sitting there. And then Dr. Cog intends to work with the proposers to see if they can make a good project out of it. One, one works on corridors, the other works on some disadvantaged neighborhoods. There's some revised planning framework for how, we have a document that talks about how C.D.R.Cog and RTD work together, and that's being improved. And we're one of the few metropolitan planning organizations that has such a document, which is, I think, a feather in Dr. Cog's hat. It's about expecting a report on the RTD free fair days very shortly. And that's all I have.
City manager.
We'll start with director reports. If anybody has any.
No report from finance.
I have two reports. The first is that you may have noticed the water level at Quincy Pond is low. That is a deliberate choice on our part. We are attempting to perform some maintenance on our intake pipes for the irrigation that, as you can imagine, are usually below the water level. So we will be letting the pond drop a little bit more, performing maintenance on those pipes and cleaning them out. And then we will refill the pond in time for this winter. So the second report is that the Art Commission will be before you at the December meeting to present their proposal from artist Joe Norman for the sculpture series they hope to commission for John Mead Park. We have small-scale models of the three pieces back here, if you want to take a look at them, following the meeting. So PTRC approved an installation by the specific artist at their August meeting. And they did have the chance to see these models at their meeting last week and had no concerns about the installation. So the Art Commission will be before you at the next meeting to talk more about that. Thank you.
We expect final election results on Thursday. Official results by November 29th. We'll have a new council orientation session that continuing council members are also welcome to come to on December 6th at 9:00 AM. And our December meeting, just a reminder, is on the second Wednesday, not a Tuesday, on the 14th. We are not going to have a January 3rd meeting because it's of its proximity to the holiday. Because we, the first meeting in January will be the organizational meeting. We want full attendance from all sitting council members, new council members. We're going to have all of that pomp and circumstance and everything. So the January 17th will be our organizational meeting. If anybody knows they won't be able to attend, please let us know as soon as possible. Thank you.
Just to build on that slightly, we are going to have an opportunity, I think, for a reception beforehand, especially for outgoing members, so, in the atrium. So in lieu of a study session, we will have an opportunity to mingle and mix and have some punch and whatever else. So if you'd like to invite some family, be a great opportunity to reflect on amazing accomplishments and a real legacy. I have two updates for council. First, just real quick follow-up on the discussion regarding noticing existing residents contained within a Cherry Hills Village GID. You don't need to vote. We will just notify those folks. If, for whatever reason, a new GID or something grows out, out of scale that we don't understand today, we'll just come back to council and ask for policy direction. But you don't need to do anything. We're just going to, best practice, we're just going to notify those folks. Counsel Sheldon is absolutely correct. Normally, you don't do those. That's not a standard practice, just so you know. Because often, they are massive. They're small cities usually, so that's why. But in this case, it's, we got it. We're on it. Second, council, I believe, I sent an email regarding a request from the renter, Jerry Neff, that we have at the Hopkins House at Quincy Farm. Ms. Neff is requesting the ability to stay there at that Hopkins House for an additional three months. After discussing the issue with councillor, Council Guckenberger, would that would actually be a new lease that would be required? And that's really for council's consideration on whether or not to grant a new three-month lease. Just as, by way of, just to put everything on the table, I did also attach the petition received from neighbors requesting that council, supporting that request. And so, so I'm putting that in front of you. I apologize that it's so rushed, but the lease is scheduled to expire on December 14th.
And our next meeting date is December 14th. So it would be too late to bring it up for the first time at that meeting. I do want to note for the record, per the lease, the existing lease, that was actually with the Sid, well, it was with Kat Anderson and Ms. Neff. We inherited that lease when we took ownership of the property. And that date, that is December 14th, 2022, has been a date constant throughout the contract. Should we not, did we, if we had not provided notice, that would have renewed for an automatic five additional years. So as a result, the city did provide notice, were required by the lease to provide a 60-day notice, we were, we provided over a five-month notice in an effort to, you know, be as considerate as we absolutely could be. So that is, that is the request that has been given to council. I can answer, I might be able to answer whatever questions you might have. I was able to speak with Ms. Neff, she was, she's, she did pass along, she was not able to be here tonight on such short notice because she had a pre-existing conflict. She indicated to me that, you know, she, her, some of her circumstances have changed, that she is moving out of state. And the process and the logistics involved with that are large enough that she was, she's not going to be able to get it done by December 14th. So she indicated, I questioned if she had known about this date for a while, why would three months from now be different? She indicated she absolutely would commit to that time. So I'm just passing along, you know, some of the details from our conversation.
It seems the real question is, are there any operational reasons that we would need? Land preserve or anybody has for that house in the next three months? I mean, is there anything?
For the house, I, I mean, not specifically.
Her rental.
I mean, I, we are obviously entering a new phase, the annual plan is approved starting in January of 2023. There are absolutely programming that's going to be taking place. Is it as much as that it's going to occur in the summer? Absolutely not, right? I'm certainly not going to try and somehow paint a picture that there's a hive of activity on the west side by the Hopkins House. That would not be an accurate statement. But, you know, I think the land preserve and city staff certainly, having a presence there does create liability. And it, you know, I think the, in the intent was to hold with that date so that we could start the new phase. Is there a lot of programming? No, there's not a lot of programming, but certainly not for the house itself. Has the, has the land preserve been made aware of this request? Yes. And do they have a position on it? Well, we have a land preserve board member here, I don't want to put them on the spot. If, should they not want to speak, I will just say, we have not received a sort of official response. I think in general, they've, they've been ready to move on, but we have not received an official response. We won't put the land preserve on the spot then tonight, but unless the land preserve would like to speak, or a member of the land preserve would like to speak. That's, that's hard.
No, I can't speak, I, I don't know that the land preserve has an official position, I know that the president of the land.
Excuse me, Mr. Holland, would you mind approaching and identifying your name for the record?
Earl Holland, member of Cherry Hills Land Preserve Board, Three Vista Road. I don't know that the land preserve in and of itself has a, has a position on this. I know that the president of the land preserve sent an email to Emily, basically saying she was against it. But I don't know that that's an official land preserve position. So I think that's probably the land preserve position. My sense is, is that, to my understanding, there is no plans to utilize the Hopkins House over these next three months. And if this were to be extended, the only thing is, is just to ensure that the new lease is structured in such a manner that it, and that the leasehold interest then of Ms. Neff does not prohibit or impede any other use of the west side, whether that be the driveway, the gate, the trail entrance, what have you. As you know, and the city rightfully so, has been very, very sensitive to that over the last few years. And it has caused, you know, not, haven't been able to utilize that. That would be the only thing that you want to make sure of, is that that is something that was taken care of. Otherwise, I don't, from my personal opinion, I don't think that that would be an issue with regard to her remaining in, in the Hopkins House for, for that period of time.
Thank you, that's good to know. I think that, yeah, it's easy to do that with a lease, with a new lease and those conditions. And then, we do have some requests from the neighbors to do that, too. I mean, we're being responsive to them if there's not a big deal. I, my suggestion would be, we can't do it tonight anyway, we can't act on it, because we have to have it on the agenda. We could prepare, have our city attorney repair a lease, and then we can all think about it, and then by the 15th vote on it, and see what you want to do. The day, the day that the lease expires, we're going to act on it?
Yeah, you can do that. I mean, the holdover, it's, the lease has been terminated, so it's not a big deal. It's not going to re-emerge or anything, that lease is gone, the old lease is gone. So at most, it'd be a day-to-day holdover. It wouldn't be a big deal.
I think we, I think that will work as long as people are leaning towards providing her with another lease. I don't think we can wait until the day she's supposed to be moved out to say, no.
That would not be managed.
Are we, are we certain that we cannot act on it tonight?
No.
Well, we.
We can direct.
You can direct us, but you have no lease to approve, and a lease must, a short-term lease of this.
But we could direct you that council's desire is to move forward in one of these two directions, and if it's one direction.
That's what the mayor was saying. Yeah, but, but a short-term lease of this nature must be approved by resolution.
And could, could council, could council also direct staff then to, if council were to feel this way, direct staff to notify her that we, if we went this way, we extended her, extended her for three months?
It's not an extension, it would be a new.
A new lease, I'm sorry.
You could direct, you could direct staff to have communication.
So that she had some certainty, if, again, if this council agreed to do that, she had, she would have some certainty before December 14th?
Well, I don't know that certainty is something you can promise because it is going to be provided for your consideration.
Right. But it would be a comfort level, maybe.
But if we're not willing to consider it at all, then we can say that tonight and let her move on. I don't get the sense that anybody is there. I'm not, for what it's worth, I think, I think everything that's been said is absolutely right. There is no immediate use of that house. I don't think that her being there, particularly in these winter months, will impede any of the proposal from the land preserve. But I think Mr. Holland makes a very good point that the current lease is written more between, sort of between individual private property owners, and is not really written as someone who is leasing a piece of public property. And so I think that kind of consideration that we need to continue to have access to everything else in accordance with the conservation easement and all of that, but yeah.
I'm sensing we have a kind of a sense of direction.
I'm supportive. I'm supportive as well.
I have one question. So the, the term three months has been bandied about, and to save some agony on the backside.
March 31.
Are we looking at 12 weeks? Are we looking at 12 plus? That takes us on.
March 31.
March 31st.
March 31st.
Yeah, March 31st.
I think I also heard some other discussion, maybe not on, from the dais tonight, but about the possibility of a month to month. I guess I, in an effort to provide certainty, are you directing staff to explore a lease option for the three months and three months only? Or something beyond that as well?
March 31st.
March 31st. I, I think, yeah, I think that's a better solution, with a certainty and that's the.
Perfect, okay, that's what I needed.
I think that's a nice, yeah, good thing to do, right, it's the right thing to do.
Agreed.
All right, any other city attorney?
Oh, nothing for me.
All right, hearing none.
Move to turn.
We are, we are without opposition, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, we'll see you next time.